All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call our regularly scheduled Select Board Meeting to Order. Let me figure out where I just put my agenda.
Did you steal any?
I have.
What are you looking for?
A minute? No, an agenda.
I gave you the agenda.
I got one.
I know.
I gave one to.
That is yours.
It's right there in front of you.
Oh, that's mine.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming.
It's minutes to.
I'm gonna just get this.
Minutes to review.
Ten minutes to review. So we'll start with reviewing and approving the minutes for August 3, 2022's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 3, 2022 Select Board Meeting.
Second it.
All right. Any adjustments that need to be made?
I didn't think so. Looks good.
Looked good to me.
I think it looks good. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes for August 3, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign for all those opposed. All right. Minutes passed. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Not that I am. I don't have anything. You got anything here?
I don't believe so.
All right. We'll just go as is. All right, I'd like to introduce Kelsey Root Winchester, who has come to just introduce herself to the town and the Select Board, and you're running for State Representative for Groton.
Thank you all for having me. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand running for State Representative in living in Groton. It's nice to see a lot of you and probably a few of you unknown as Lisa's mom. But I just wanted again to say hello and introduce myself. I'm a small business owner. I've been a member of the Blue Mountain Union School Board since 2016. And especially I know a lot of faces here, some of who were in school with my kids. And I'm really a big proponent of making Vermont a rural little place, especially here out in our rural parts of Vermont. Making things so we can have a good quality education for our kiddos that's safe and have more of that quality affordable healthcare. And in some of my work, I've been a member of the Wellsober Action Program for a number of years. And we work with affordable housing. And slight plug, we're having our Circle Summer Color Fall Festival on Saturday, so come on down. I've also been a part of the Little River Healthcare Board, so another reason to have good quality healthcare and the 302 Who Cares?, which is the Drug Prevention Coalition in Wellsober, which I'm sure Groton is like all the other towns in that area, we've seen a lot of substance abuse happen. It's been raging through the towns and we need more work. We focus on prevention, but it needs work all over the board. So those are just a few things about me, but I know they're proclaiming that just keeping our small communities. We know where we live here, we work here. And keeping the Select Boards like yourselves, you know, it powers us and you can keep doing the good work that you're doing and just helping where I can. And I just had a serious chat up that you guys record this. You're the only Select Board I know that has camera systems. So I'm talking about, they promise you guys are making it more enjoyable, good meetings, you know, open meeting halls. But that's just a little bit about me. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for going, yeah. Next on the agenda. Want to have some discussion around potentially moving our Select Board Meetings from first and third Thursdays to the first and third Wednesdays of the month.
It's good for me.
Good for you.
I like, well, it's nice because on Thursday we can still go, we can go into the office and deal with things and get things done on Thursday instead of we gotta wait till Monday of the following week to follow up or finish up stuff. So it's more convenient. I think for that reason, to kind of follow up on things and it's in the middle of the week versus the end of the week. I don't know. What do you guys think? What's your schedules like?
I prefer Thursdays. That's me.
Okay.
Works best for my schedule.
Okay.
I'm also a Vermonter. Don't like change. So it's been four and a half years on a Thursday schedule, so. But that's, that's me.
Okay.
What do you think? Honestly, I'm indifferent. It doesn't make a lot of difference to me.
Okay.
I'm busy either way. I don't know what sports schedules look like for kids, so it doesn't really matter.
We could try it.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm. Aaron, if you're open to try it.
Yeah, doesn't matter. If you two want to do it, doesn't matter if I'm.
Well, no, I'm just.
No, no, I mean, now that we're.
If you said I'm deadly against that, what do you, Wednesdays, we talked about Wednesdays.
You brought up having the next day to tackle anything that gets brought up at the meeting and that did seem smart to me, but either way is fine.
Or you guys could just take Monday off or Friday.
We could do that too. We've got to talk to them at the garage and change my schedule.
So, I mean, I would say, you know, if you guys are both okay with it, I think we start with our next Select Board Meeting, which should be the 14th, which is the Wednesday.
Okay.
That's right, 14th. If y'all are okay with that, I think we just will change the schedule and if it doesn't seem like it's working, we can always.
Go back.
Go back or. Go to Tuesday.
Or Monday. Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday morning.
Nobody's doing it Saturday. It won't, I don't have a problem with that because I won't be there, but.
All right, so we will, do we need a motion to do that? I don't think so. I think we can just change our schedule.
We just have to.
We just. For changing it from Thursday.
They're Monday and Wednesdays.
Okay. Well, we would probably more than likely be downstairs.
Yeah.
But I'll let them know.
Yeah, we can. I'll give us something to listen to while we're down.
Dump down there.
All right, great, thanks. Community Club Fall Foliage Day update. I just wanted to make sure, I don't know, Peter, if you had any updates on fall foliage planting. I think everything's in good shape, right, for?
Fall foliage is almost over Saturday. I thought we changed that and I'll have to.
Oh, no, we're not changing that. Oh, yeah, we're gonna make it. We're gonna move it.
First slide is up. I'll leave out the bar. It's up today.
Good, so good. I think the other good question I have is just with our new constable, making sure that he was aware. Peter, do you know, I forget your first name.
Mark.
That's right. Mark Puffer. I kept thinking all week it's Nate, but it's not Nate, it's Mark.
I was on the, hey, you.
So, so, Mark. You know, I think the one question I just wanted to make sure Mark was involved with any planning we needed to do around traffic control for that Saturday. So, Mark, so you can talk to Peter about that if that's.
You were in on that.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is we all know this for it.
Okay.
No, no, the city, you put the, we signed it up and then control the fall.
Okay.
Should we talk to the Sheriff's Department too about being here for that?
I didn't think that would be a bad thing either.
Yep. Somebody here I imagine will be in expense, but.
They've been pretty reasonable. Have you seen the hours and stuff?
Yeah. Got the bill, the flat $39.
Yeah, they're not charging us for travel or anything, so which is really wonderful.
I think it might not be.
And they're here.
It might not be a bad thing too because it, so we can reach out.
I mean, no, I mean, I think, remember looking at that contract nights and weekends as an extra charge.
We're willing to pay and I think that's good too.
There's money in the law enforcement too. We didn't take it all out.
Right. Right, and it just, it kind of gives the towns.
It will be $10,000.
The townspeople kind of, he can, you know, somebody can kind of.
Well, we tell the sheriff he could be the marshal of the parade.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it'd be good to be seen. A lot of people here.
Think it'd be good.
God, that county can have a cruiser.
We can offer him to be the marshal of the parade.
That's right.
So I think, Peter, though.
I guess he's working on this right now.
Hey, Peter.
We're working.
Yeah, you were, sorry. The only other thing maybe to touch base with him on too would be just from being here during the Chicken Pie Supper is just making sure we've got a good traffic control plan for right here in front of the fire department.
Do you guys have a fire department? Okay, tell the fire department.
No, but I just want to make sure that, you know, as the.
You can.
Well, I know, but as the organizer of the event, Peter, I would suggest that we make sure we've got a good mitigation plan for cars not being parked in front of the fire department, like last year.
You have to work that out with that pretty strong on the need of parking for access and aggressive, so I put it by.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so Aaron, anyway.
Everything's good with that? So my suggestion would be that we need to make it a no parking zone.
It is.
For the whole, for that whole evening.
If there's a fire.
I mean, even the spots.
If somebody parked in the way, they wouldn't.
As long as you can get the chickens sold that.
Yeah. Is there any other updates for the, for the community?
From the Community Club? I mean, I don't know, did they? Have we been paid, has the town been paid for the event fees?
Ask.
Hey, Peter, do you have? Peter, do you have an update on the reservation fees for the building for the event?
And what are we talking about?
Peter, you know what I'm talking about.
Oh, no.
The $50 event fee for renting the community building for Chicken Pie Supper.
We went back to the minutes and saw where you had suggested that the fees been charged the first time in 60 years and then we went back to see if we had officially adopted the fees and we cannot find any minutes to say you officially adopted the fees.
Okay, well, we need to do the policy update.
We haven't yet. We haven't updated it yet.
So if you want to change, you should.
That's the one right here.
Peter, it was discussed prior to last meeting and so you're aware, if you're not aware, it was paid anonymously this summer by a citizen of the town, resident of the town, who wanted to bury that hatchet moving forward. Now, we established last year that the agreed upon fee was going to be $50 for the event because it's a three-day event.
We gave a little stat. We saw where you had suggested, personally suggested charging. We went through the minutes and we saw a couple meetings later where you talked about you're going to need an adopt policy. We went through the following minutes and we found no policy adopted. If you want to try to charge a nonprofit like Community Club and give $1,000 back to the community, I would have two comments, shame on you, and officially adopt the policy and we'll follow.
That's on the list for tonight to adopt the town property.
Okay. Adopt the policy.
Peter, we need to adopt the policy.
We need to talk about that, I mean, a little bit further, I mean.
Well, there was a very long discussion and honestly, that wasn't the only fee that was an issue. So we got stuck until the Community, until the Community Club actually paid it in, what, April, March? We got, we were sent the bill for the waste disposal from Pete's rubbish because it wasn't taken care of as well. And Peter, I got, I got nothing wrong with the event and those type of things. It's, you know, but as was discussed last year when it was agreed upon and yes, there was no policy maybe adopted, but it was agreed upon that we were doing this and we've charged every nonprofit that has had an event minus the blood drive for using the building, so.
Mary, 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 Sheriff, Mary. Those terms up there for $3,000, they should come out in five days. Tapes, come out in five. These chairs will also now members of the community that are following.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
The chairs are there. This is one of the things that I was about to add.
Have you been?
That is exactly how we.
Well, no. It's you have taken your first step in a non-profit's tree of life.
We should call the president to have a review. We should say, oh, we're.
He doesn't occasion this one.
We shouldn't get a tax bill. Where's my frickin'? That's a good point. I know it's good, this is good.
So, I mean, I guess.
We need to work on the policy. We'll just, at this point.
We're gonna review it.
Okay, Peter, we'll, we'll take that into review. So are we done with the community?
Yeah.
I, yep.
Update? This one's gonna be a good meeting.
Yeah.
We'll work on the policy and then charge it.
What was the reason why we stopped covering Community Club for the Chicken Pie Supper for insurance? Do you remember?
Never did. It was brought up from one of your members saying that they should have insurance. The people on the Community Club were concerned about the liability of their Chicken Pie supper. So then they became a nonprofit and got insurance, so it was brought up by the.
Okay. And I'm also, I'm trying to recall why exactly we had the conversation about charging in the first place. Not just because I can't remember. I don't have my notes with me either, but.
Well, I have some of the minutes from back in 2021 that you can review when they're discussion.
Okay.
Otherwise, Peter, the Fall Foliage Day is planned and ready to go and everybody's excited about it, right?
We are, from back, I have the, Patrick, you're the little, come along with yourself. This year here is kind of cool. We brought the conversation about it. The most of the towns, we have a couple towns that aren't in that. Most of the towns this year are not participating yet for the region, so it's kind of cool. So last year we did ourselves, we had a fire and now some kind of that. And regional was really a lot nicer for kids of the East. I got some folks in Texas, in California, in Carolina, they come up here. They love it over here, so they have a lot of things to do. So having that, you know, these offerings is kind of cool. So, please, I have a suggestion to bring up, hold from the shelves in front of the officer, and then help I got.
I've already pulled out all over the place.
I've got some in my truck. I can bring it down.
No, I got some in my truck too. I've been doing that a lot. I'm getting on there. It can help with that too. All right. Move on on the agenda. NEK CUD OLT Cabinet, I talked to Mike Geis. He had another meeting at 6:30, so.
Where are we at on that? Any update?
They sent, he sent an email, or NEK Broadband sent an email earlier today to our town emails.
Oh, I didn't.
Which is, but it's basically a hold tight. They're trying to find another location.
They didn't see anything on town property that was in work.
Correct, yeah, for now, but they're gonna come back to us and talk to us about what they come up with. What's that?
Yeah, and I may come to that because I don't know.
I'd say email Mike Geis and talk to him. They're looking first spot on what they're calling the backbone, which is the key. But he also said that they're, he's got a newsletter that'll be coming out later from NEK Broadband that'll come out for, to kind of cover a lot more.
And you did see that they're trying to get, they're shooting up satellites that are gonna get everybody broadband.
Yeah, SpaceX has been doing that forever.
I know.
He's got it in his house.
He does?
He does. $40 for the dish and then you get covered, I think you have to pay a subscription for it.
But we're gonna have to pay and pay in more for this anyways when we get to.
All right, infrastructure projects. So we do have a resolution to use funds for this USDA application and I'm gonna read the resolution. It's resolved that the Select Board is authorized to use $225,000 of town funds. In parentheses, I'll say that's the ARPA funds and the.
Button balance.
Yeah. Yeah, general fund balance funds that we set aside.
Yep.
And to support the $200,000 Congressional Direct Spending Funding that will be accessed through the federal assistance with the use of the USDA Community Facilities Grant Program for the Municipal Building Health Access Safety and Stormwater Improvement Project. Town funds include ARPA funds of $248,000 and up to $150,000 of general fund surplus. All those in favor of adopting the resolution? Well, I guess I gotta open it up to.
Discussion?
Yeah. Well, no, I need somebody to second it first.
I have a second.
Okay. And discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Resolution passed, so this is my idea. Okay.
Oh, she was trying to make sure she knows that right now. She understands what that.
More fun for a name for the project.
That's what the USDA wants to see, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, the motion. Aaron, second it.
Okay, next on the agenda, highway.
Really?
Yeah. I think I forgot to. We already did.
We heard that before you guys, we called it aye.
I think this is on my air.
And I've got paperwork for a van, and I've bought one that we've been booting for. Did you guys sign for a letter to them?
No, we gotta sign that actually.
You gotta sign that.
Drive line, lake side.
Over here.
Grand.
Peter lines. Just. 215.
Yeah, so I had a big pickup spot, but I got it and it's.
Just like everywhere.
I think it's a long way from my location.
Yeah. So anything on it that goes in the road?
Anything near the road.
That's like a whole pattern line.
We've come all the way here, actually.
Really?
All the way here.
Huh, yeah. The Grand South, that's for sure.
Roadside mowing's all done?
All done.
Grader's still running?
Grader's still running.
Good, good. How did the roadside mowing come out with one pass? What?
It's not as good as three passes.
Well, I guess.
But we don't have to work with it. It's not enough.
Do we get our money for it?
I think so.
Good.
Worked in America one day and I think you did it. So I said something to the kids, we got work for a couple kids that were playing. And he's like, I'll fix it here. So he went back and worked.
Good.
He did what he did because we're eleven.
Shocking.
He paid for the equipment. He doesn't want a ding a blade out of this.
I think they did it well.
Okay.
I think they got their own game back this year.
Okay.
I got it back a little while they were going in.
Okay.
And they did it actually in some spots, because some spots they didn't have to do anything, but it was decent.
Right.
So in some spots that needed an extra pass or surprise, they did that.
Right, okay.
So I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Okay, good. What's on the agenda now? Were you just working on Graden and your?
I was just finishing ditching Melvin's head.
Okay.
Because some of the ditches on the right hand side, Bermau, all the stones on the left hand side. The deck opened up, we got a top foot that was sitting back and grating. You should have done that for a long time.
Famous last word, that's steep.
Well, we needed to grate pretty hard the other night and it did wash the road out. A lot ran off like it's supposed to. So I'm pretty confident that we graded and hold it, get it packed out.
You got your, you got your calcium chloride?
We got a little bit left and I want to get some more Monday.
Okay.
So we just grated through yesterday. We're trying to get some of the worst ones working around here, try to get caught back up again.
Okay, good.
Hopefully the next one will come a little quicker than three and a half weeks.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, move on to treasure. Where would you like to start?
I, we finished the tax bills and they'll be sent out and received by most everybody early next week.
Wow.
Except everybody that works for the town, got theirs handed to them. Budgets are handed out to the Select Board, the departments I'll do early next week. I couldn't get them done, but we're at 67%.
See that. What's running high, anything?
You know, it's like the fuel.
Yeah. I don't see that getting any better anytime soon.
I think it's got as better as it's gonna get for.
Unless we can go everything on propane.
So I didn't know if you wanted to talk about Budget Day again. It was originally discussed, thinking about doing it on Saturday, the 19th. Is that where we're still thinking?
Sorry, Tristan.
No.
I think.
What day was it? Saturday?
The 19th of November.
That month?
November.
That's the second, second, second Saturday of your season.
Be all tagged out.
So I, I have some two ideas. If you wanted to do it after or in place of Select Board Meetings, do one on October 19th and one on November 16th. The November 19th meeting would be all like non-department head ones, like the, you know, your budget, town clerk's budget, my budget, community building, town property maintenance, all that. That doesn't require someone to come in and present their budget. And then November 16th would be for all the department heads that have a budget that's changing or wants to present something different. So that would be like Assessor, Highway Fire, Force Fire Fast, the rec in library. So that would be.
So if we could do our meetings, we could, we could put aside, you know, an hour or something, a half an hour to go over each department. Don't give me that, Terry.
It's gonna be a couple hours. Did I do this? I can't remember if I made copies of this.
I already don't feel that on the 19th.
No, this is budget pay. I didn't give you that. It's just my thoughts of how the date could be broken up.
It's fine.
Why, why do we do it in November? I'm gonna back up a few bit. Just historically, why have we done it in the middle of November?
Just because it's. Because it's getting close to the end of the year. It takes a long time to enter everything in and. Well, just to see what, how much of the budget is used to.
That's true. You do it any earlier and you still have two months.
And we still, and we slow down in December. Usually the second week of December, we stop spending on purchases. You know, so things.
But yeah, we should start it, we should do it in December, the second week in December.
Yeah, maybe.
Nobody's in the December.
First week of the December, maybe. I mean, I'm just thinking like.
That's muzzleloader thing.
It's a week in between.
I like the Saturday. Stick with the Saturday.
Saturday's fine.
Saturday works for me.
Whatever, Saturday's fine.
And then you can focus all day, all day on the budget.
All right, I just wanted to bring.
Breaking it up, you know what I mean? Just focus for six hours on.
Yeah, just get it done, yeah.
Okay.
I do too.
If you want to pick a different Saturday.
No. It's the next Saturday, which is this Saturday. Or the Saturday before that, which is the opening day, which we did last year.
That won't be happening. That was, I won't be here.
Yeah, go down to Bill's after and see everybody's deer.
I don't even know that I'll be here.
That's, so I think the 19th is fine. I think we keep it as a Saturday. I don't, I don't see any issue with that.
Other than the obvious.
Other than the obvious. It's just wild.
I'll talk to Toby about it and see what he says.
He'll be in Canada.
Yeah, see? See?
Okay, and then so the town policies, I gave you like a schedule of what we've done so far and what is happening. And tonight we were going to talk about the town buildings use policy. So I think you all took copies.
Are we doing that right now or are we, if we're doing that later?
No, that's where I put it under treasure.
Oh, you did, okay. All policy updates. Okay, got you. All right, okay.
Okay.
So...
Policy updates.
You all have it, right?
Right. Yeah. Community building use policy, which changes, new title would be Town Buildings Use Policy.
So it's just this one tonight then?
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. Because I think we just...
So old versus new, which I read over this quickly.
Yep.
Um, so it's gonna be going up from $8 to $10 hourly fee.
Yep.
It's gonna be 15 instead of $10 for the non-residents. It's gonna be, uh, separate 50 damage, $50. Okay, that's the same. What else is, what else are we changing? Is that it? Is that all the, the money?
So what's the...
$50, $100?
What's, what's the, um, it says town of Groton will need to be listed as certified or certificate holder for general liability insurance. Is that somebody paying it in and then they have to list us?
No, that's like a committee. It's like Taekwondo sends me their insurance.
Okay.
VAST, who uses the highway garage for Buckaroo's thing, they send me their insurance.
Even the ball field being used this weekend, they sent me their insurance.
Alright.
Okay.
Now, are, for the ball fields, are they paying rent for the ball fields?
No. Because there's no heat and...
No electricity. There's no...
Yeah, but we still have to pay to mow it. We still have to pay to maintain it. We just bought a new shed.
They clean, they take care of the infield. I don't know. It's a thought if you wanted to do that, but...
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm... Just let everybody use it for free and just...
Yeah, but you get into a can of worms.
Oh, yeah, that's, we're already doing a can of worms, aren't we?
I'm just saying. You're gonna do it, you gotta do it for everybody, right?
Or nobody.
Or nobody.
Not really a building. We haven't, I mean...
Oh, but it's town property. Yeah, it's a town.
Yeah, but we don't charge someone to go sit in the gazebo, do we?
No, you can have a birthday party in the gazebo.
Yeah, no, I, no, I get that. I'm just, you know, again, somebody sitting in the gazebo.
This is a policy that can be changed at any point.
No kidding?
If somebody points out a conflict in the policy, a month down the road, we can...
Looking at the, looking at the last prop, you know, policy and it says nonprofit public town events may be, may, may have the fee waived if agreed upon by the select board.
I see. Where'd you read that?
The fifth paragraph, sixth paragraph. Fifth paragraph. Larger events, over 50 people, we reserve in advance on the, the old one.
Yep.
Will be approved by the select board or by the person being appointed by the select board to approve the application.
But it's not on the new one.
No, we don't have counts of how many people come to the parties or funerals.
So, but instead we've changed that now to multiple, multiple day events.
Yeah.
So if somebody rents it Friday to set up for a party for Saturday, it'd be $50. Is that what we're saying? Or like...
Well, well, like the, I think it was the girl who did the big weightlifting thing. She had a couple days paid that way. I'd have to double check, but I think so.
Yeah, she did. I remember because it was...
That looks, okay, that's fine.
Were they non-for-profit, non-for-profit?
I don't believe so.
So how many days is there? How many days are you allowed to rent a community building for $50?
Multiple days?
Well, yeah, so how many multiple days?
Three.
More than one?
$50, I could stay here all winter.
That's right. Maybe.
I don't know. You guys decide.
I'm just saying.
I mean, put your notes down.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to adopt this policy tonight. You guys got reservations on it? You wanna go through and, you know what I mean?
I think for...
Which we could pick everything apart.
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely.
I, I think...
But you've got to, at some point, somebody could take advantage of it because it isn't clear on, okay, so, so I paid 50 bucks for 10 days or for...
Well, I think...
Not getting...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But is there, do we, do we have like a, okay, not to get too far down the weeds here, but do we have an application for renting, like a form that's an application for renting a building, correct? So that can be indicated on there, you know, that it's a maximum of three days. You know, a multiple day or, you know, one to, or, yeah.
Three days.
Events of three days or less.
Looks good. I approve.
Which, I mean, it gets, brings us back to, this just say, says multiple day events. It doesn't specify not-for-profits. It doesn't, so should we be charging everybody for this? This is the conversation we had a year ago. So should we be charging everybody for this or should we not charging people for it? Or should it be at select board discretion?
Everybody gets charged for it.
Everybody, yeah.
So including the community club?
Yeah.
Everybody gets paid. Everybody gets charged, yeah. Community club included, absolutely. Definitely. It's only 50 frickin' dollars.
Well, I just got told earlier.
I know. I, 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 I guess. So 50 dollars. So, yeah, everybody.
So, and I think, yeah, it's...
Huh?
It's 100. It went up to 100.
Oh, $100.
Plus a $50 deposit.
Right, 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 right.
And you got the thing that says select board, somebody with cancer wants to hold a fundraiser here, you know, the select board can, you know...
Well, but that applies to...
It does.
If the select board wants to. We need to make sure that that's in here then too, that it's not in.
Okay, we're not ready.
I don't think this policy's ready to adopt.
But we need to get...
Alright, well, I, I would like to...
Write some notes on it.
What's that?
Write some notes on it and think about it and cash it out.
So I'd like to, uh...
I just feel like...
Is there any, is there any public comment?
We don't have any public. Do we have to have any public comment?
No, it says select board policy. The select board decides this policy.
We have to give, it is our policy to decide, but we do have to give...
One of the very few things that the select board actually has power in this panel.
We don't need, we have enough trouble with this stuff.
That's part of meeting laws. It's part of, but it's part of meeting laws if we have to have meetings.
Don't get too...
No, not in select board policy. Not in select board policy.
No.
Not in adopting policies.
Okay.
Okay, so three days.
So talking about the, the gym, this only applies to the community building gymnasium and kitchen, right?
Right.
Doesn't apply to the other town properties?
No, mine's...
All town buildings.
Yes.
So like highway department, when that gets rented out.
Well, paragraph three needs to be updated then.
No.
Because it doesn't specifically say. It says specifically, the community club, the community building gymnasium and kitchen will be available for public use.
Yeah, it does.
Providing there's no conflict with town meaning.
Correct. But it doesn't specify highway garage. I don't know that you would call a fire park.
Town-owned buildings.
Yeah, it would be all town-owned buildings. I, I, does... Yeah.
I think we got it.
Don't get, don't read that. It's too much. Make a few adjustments so we'll tell it. Because otherwise you're gonna...
We, we need to, we need to simplify this, I think.
You need, you need, bring this policy with you on your way to work in the morning. You can study it on your commute.
I'll just, I'll make adjustments while I'm driving. That's exactly what I'm, yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll update what we, what you discussed.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm off work tomorrow, so I'll take some time tomorrow to type something out.
Come on. You really gonna put that much into... You don't have anything else to do?
Cut it away, y'all.
You think you're off to work.
Just, yeah, until the phone starts ringing.
Okay, so we're gonna table that right now and make some adjustments on that.
Yep. I, I agree.
Okay.
I, I will, I will state for the record though, that there is a town policy here, community building use policy, that does state that it's at the select board's discretion as to whether fees should be waived or not. And it has to be agreed upon by the select board. So that's the policy. I would make sure that Mr. Lyons reads that policy in the book.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. Town clerk. Or Lisa, did you have any help?
I think I'm done.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Now she doesn't even wanna talk about anything else.
Okay. So I was just gonna talk a little bit about the election. We had 180 ballots were cast, 47 absentee, 133 in person. So not too bad, nothing fabulous, but, um, we wanna thank Bill and Julie Payton for providing lunch for us on that day. It was lovely. They had contacted me ahead of time and brought us in sandwich meats and bread and salad and...
They weren't even running for any.
Cookies and brownies and, so it was lovely.
Was there any of that left over when you helped out clean up at night?
I left the cookies and brownies out.
All wrapped up, set aside. Real inviting.
So all that went well. The new tabulator went well. So I was very happy. Um, if you had heard anything about the election, it had nothing to do with the tabulators and the towns. It was the state, the way they had redistricted, um, after the census. So it was some mistake on their end and I think it was in Chittenden County anyway.
So did they actually put us with Danville?
No. They just, they took longer to do their official tally at the end. But all in all, it went well. Uh, I did receive the parade permit, been approved. So that was good to get back. That's, so that's all set.
Good.
I did talk with Mark about helping, like we touched on earlier, to help with, you know, closing off the road. But one, two, three, four different spots.
Let me, let me know if you need help with that too, because I, I'll be around, so I'll park the truck across the road or something.
Go and see Jim and get the signs.
Oh, we have them here.
And all the numbers, do you think?
Yep.
Awesome. So I'll just have to put those up.
Yep.
Make sure you dig safe and wait for them there.
Okay, good.
And we have the new, the liquor licensing that's normally done by paper, if you all remember. We just have the two usually in town. So the state has changed that to all online through a state portal, of course, taking, taking everything.
Oh, yeah.
So I did some training on that and that's all set up and running. So from that day on, it's all online.
He doesn't have to sign anything anymore?
Uh, no.
But the select board approves it.
I think it was just chairs.
No, it was all three.
Soon as it's approved through all the things, we just click, I just click approve. So, but they, they send it all in online to the state. The state checks their stuff. The stores do. Yeah.
But the select board still signs off on it, alright?
So that's a question. So...
It's a little different.
The select board has regulatory responsibility for liquor licenses, correct?
We get, we'll get, I'll get a notification on, an email that something's in the portal and then we do our part. So it's to be brought to you.
Oh, okay.
After they've done their part. Set it by paper now.
But are we still doing, are we still signing something? Is there still a paper? So that's what's weird. So if it's online...
Always have to approve it.
And we have to approve it, other than it being in the minutes. I, I still feel like, so, so if Umer Valley Grill, he has to submit that online now?
And the forest store, is that?
Yeah. And probably Sarkis eventually, I'm sure.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, or even if you're just doing a one-day catering thing, it all has to go through this portal now.
Okay, well, I mean, we didn't really see any of those one-day things anyway that almost...
Once in a while, Burnt Barn, they have one.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine, yeah, we'll just, I don't know. That's weird. It's, it's weird though because it's a select board regulating that.
You know what? I would, I would elect Kelsey Root. She'll just take care of that.
That's it.
I think once we, you know, it won't be till, I think Bill and the forest are due at the same time. It won't be till next early spring that we'll see any of this. By then they'll weed out some of their problems.
If they're gonna do it online, then the state, state liquor board should just handle it all. I mean, why does it even need to go through the select board?
I know. So...
Yeah, anyway.
So that's, that update.
Yeah, probation.
Oh, back, just gonna sidetrack back to the general election in November. No need to request an absentee ballot. They're all being mailed by the state to all active voters who are not challenged. So you don't, you, you know, they recommended you going into your My Voter page, just check your address and stuff, but you don't need to request. If you do request one, it's fine, it just sits there. But the state's mailing those all out roughly around September 26th.
Do we have to bring those back to vote or is there...
We'll have some here. If you bring it, you can use it. If you don't, we'll still have ballots. You can vote in person still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you, but you'll have...
Everybody's getting just like...
Everybody's like...
Everybody's getting ballots, yeah.
So that's a new law going forward now.
Okay. Seems, that's another odd thing.
It is odd.
That seems odd.
I was just gonna touch a little bit, this probably opens another can of worms, but properties being posted.
It's that time of the year.
No, it's any time of the year.
Well, it's any time of the year, but I know, but prior to hunting season, it's a good time to talk about that.
So people sometimes I don't think know the rules, which are a little weird, but, so three properties in the whole Towne Grattan.
Are legally posted.
I can't even guarantee that they're legally posted. They are given, they were given to me their information sent to the state, but then you have to have your, how you post it. All your signs have to be updated with the date on it, the current year.
Every year, correct.
Every year. And it has to be all the way around your property.
Every 50 feet?
400.
400 feet, yeah. And it has to be, if I'm correct about the regulation, it also has to be on its own signpost. It can't be stuck to trees or other things, from what I remember.
I can't remember that part.
Although the game wardens don't, they pay attention to the sign actually being posted visibly.
Yeah. And being all the way around.
Most people don't legally do it. They just wanna discourage people from going on their property.
Yeah. But it is something that people don't think about.
Well, last year, I know, last year we had...
Yeah, well, it was investigated.
Where there was an investigation done for a hunter that was trespassing on posted property. It wasn't actually trespassing on posted property because it wasn't properly posted.
Right, which is usually the case.
Which, yeah.
Nine times out of ten.
Because I went through the file that had since like 1997. I mean, the papers in there, they're only good for one year. So there was no need to keep all these. But it's from multiple people that are still here in town and it makes me wonder if they think because they did it once.
It's all good.
Right.
Which is not.
It's every year.
Should...
It's not for a year. It's every year.
And if your land is in land use, you can't post, right?
You should can.
You can post?
Yeah, you should.
So...
Do I have to pay you to post your land so I can't use it?
So this, do we, do we feel like it, that the town should have a responsibility to contact people that have posted properties?
No.
We should just...
You know the town did?
No.
Well...
No. If you're posting your property, it's self-advocative. That's why they make it come.
Actually, it's not. That's what we're saying. It has to be submitted through the town. But that's, so what I'm saying, well, well, what I'm saying is, is should we be proactive about people that haven't, have previously had the intent to post their property?
No.
I just think me bringing up right now is doing a service to say, if you really want to post your property, then look into...
No, I, I agree. What, what I also don't want is to send the message to hunters and me being a hunter, that just because a posted sign up doesn't mean it's really posted so you can hunt there. You know what I mean? I don't want to put people into a position where they have to deal with, you know, one of those investigations.
Well, people can, I guess you don't know the signs, I guess, but the first thing they can do is check if they filed something.
As a, as a previous offender of Vermont Fish and Wildlife regulations, um, that game warden, at the time that he apprehends you or that he confronts you about an issue around posting or otherwise, he can take your weapon, he can take your gear, he can take all of that until that investigation's done.
I can tell you...
No, no, that's...
I can tell you from personal experience, um, Gatesland, out in West Rock, I had hunting dogs. That land was in land use and it was posted. Every single year, I'd take my dogs up to a house with Bob until he called the game warden, the game warden came, asked my license, saw my license, and then he escorted me off the property the first time.
Yep.
So, but most good hunters are gonna go ask permission before they go on some of these property entries.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we don't have to get into this whole thing.
Yeah, but, but, thanks, Gary.
If a county is a guy hunting, you go on a place that you've not posted or you've hunted there for years, and you walk through posters and there's still fire products, now you own a different piece of property, but you never saw a poster going off. I can take it with a few places in this town. I've done it myself, folks. The one sign is getting destroyed. We replaced that one, but you don't pick your other signs for another 10 years.
Now that's, again, I think what Gary's trying to say is it's the responsibility of a landowner to go and tend to post their property, to, to properly post it and report it through the town clerk's office on an annual basis.
Yeah. I mean, if, if they want it to be, you know, in forest, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, done deal.
Done deal.
Well, I'm going to tell the people who live here, pick a year. I'm pretty sure that's the old one. What a post rock and get good for 10 years, remember?
Yeah.
One other thing just to throw out there to Select Board to start thinking about and doing some research on is I had a, not a request, but a question about the Towne Grattan doing cannabis retail.
I'd take it before the town. I'd do it as my vote. My opinion would be you would have my vote.
I would say, yeah, we would, we would warn, we would warn a, a, um, we would warn a meeting that we would do that as a public vote for the town. And a lot of towns have done that.
Yeah. I, I think it has to be that way.
Yeah, I agree.
You have to opt into it. I just want you to say it's on somebody's radar.
But, and if, if that's the case, and, you know, there are specific state regulatory requirements that don't impact the town, I don't think, other than us as a town, you know, voting to decide that that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
I don't know all, it, it, because it's so new, I don't know all of the regulations. But it would be like the liquor license. They're, they're doing a marijuana distribution board.
Board.
Board or something. Yeah, that would be the same way. I think it's regulated the same way.
Okay. Just wanted to throw that out there for you to know that someone's thinking about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
First, we have a lot of information. Who has the state of cannabis, for example? Also, I haven't found that of you.
Yeah.
It keeps changing all the time.
Yes, it does. Indeed. Um, all right, Assistant Assessor, we got a...
Update.
Update from Dorothy via her memo.
Memorandum.
Yep, her memorandum. Um, it's not a TPS report. Um, tax maps, uh, tax map updates have been submitted to Cartographic for 2022. We should have new tax maps in the next couple of weeks. Uh, there has been no update on the current use audit that was recently completed.
And actually, the maps came today.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
Look at that.
Good.
Awesome.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Thank you, Dorothy.
All right, Fire and Fast.
How'd the barbecue go? Barbecue went well. Barbecue went well.
Lots of people?
Uh, sold out of chicken, I believe. So, um, and, uh, the rescue is down at Darlings because of the ice storm last February, I think it was. Yeah, they finally got it down in the Darlings. And I think this morning, there was an email that said it's still gonna be a week or two down there. So...
Shocking.
Yeah.
What's that Darlings?
The rescue.
Rescue?
Yeah. Rescue for the fire department is down at Darlings.
Rescue vehicle.
A rescue vehicle.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron.
Yep.
Uh, Constable Mark. Any updates from you?
Captain Matisse.
All right. Good.
Did you get a chance to talk to, um...
I haven't been doing that.
Okay.
I received an email a while back, a few weeks ago, about, from Trevor, about the training options. And I sent him to Mark, but I don't think it worked. The timelines were not good. And then I have another email about the body camera, but I think that just opens a whole big thing.
I think so.
Um, not to use it.
Yeah.
I, I will print it and put it in the Select Board because I can't remember exactly what he said.
Which I think we just talked about, uh...
I, I don't, I think it's a can of worms. We don't want to get involved with that.
Right.
Because it's not, the position isn't a law enforcement position. And I think that that just, again, it opens a lot of other things. I'm, I'm wondering if the, if the Sheriff's Department would take our cameras and in kind donation towards our bill. I don't know. Just an idea.
They should try to sell it. Not gonna even do it.
Yep, we can look into that.
Not even that old. Not a year. Maybe move it for six...
So no, no body camera for you? Is that all right, Mark?
So me and Gary actually, uh, talk about that. And as far as I go, the body camera's bad. Um, and if I wanna cover myself, I can buy it at, and put it in the truck. That's what I was thinking. And then that's, it's all me. It's not you guys. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, gotcha.
And we are working on getting Mark some shirts with some Grattan Constable embroidery or whatever and another hat and just a ID badge.
I would say, I, I get high vis, high vis stuff with reflective.
I'm all in on that.
All go needs and reflective.
Jim has got to have a constable. I bet it's constable best he had to have.
Oh, Jackie Dixie went out and did it or something.
Guaranteed he had it best.
Yep. All right. It's all for the Constable for now. Um, library? Any updates from the library?
Sure. So, um, we still have a child that has a copy of the test report to distribute to the Comptessary of the State Department of Health. Um, so just as a, those are available in the library. Um, the library's facilities have moved their meeting to September the 13th, which is a Tuesday. At 6:30, the time remains the same. They're just moving in. This one meeting from Thursday to the 13th.
These are people. Starts at, starts at 6:30?
6:30, yeah. Um, I am working on the library's program for fall foliage day. Um, part of what we're working to do and are calling, uh, local area artists and craft people to participate in a community art showcase that will sort of decorate the library now of the day. Um, I have posted information on the library. So I'm sorry, maybe building will be sort of circling the more information. But if you're interested in participating, 2D or 3D projects, all nature, all skill levels, just to sort of see what other people out there are making and be inspired by our 2D members, just to know the library and have a share more to people. Um, and then I just wanted to share with everybody, um, your life this morning, sadly, with your graphic in front of the library. It's pretty exciting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, zoning?
Zoning. End of the month informational meeting on the changes and collections to zoning by law. And then we'll be bringing it back to you at some point.
Okay, good. What, what date is that?
27th.
27th.
27th of the evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, doing along with that? I spoke with Harold last week and the week before, once again, on the Mookie at the end of the year. I've had three calls from prospective lawyers. All three of them have told me that the owner has given me the permission to put a road in. So all three have been told, no, it's not going to happen.
Where, where is this? It's below the...
It's below the... Lowly arms on that shaft there.
Okay.
The blue key puts us down in the bottom.
You don't know this there. Just as soon as you cross that bridge, there's a blue key.
Oh, yeah, right there by the river. Yeah.
Um, let's see. We've had some different problems showing up that Gary and I've worked through on past practices of zoning. We're going through that. But as, as the sales of town land, not town land, but the sales of land in the town continue, we're gonna get more of these. And it's, sometimes it's easy to fix, sometimes not so much.
Okay. Any, any others?
Nope, nothing new.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Health officer.
Okay.
Rental, rental property complaint.
Yeah, we had that complaint. Uh, it would be best for you not rather than reading through the entire 10-page complaint and things, uh, just go to the finding of the fact sheet that I took and presented to the Select Board and also to the state fire marshal. Uh, the individual, uh, did not meet the requirements for a complaint. Uh, the fire marshal agreed with me and in fact, uh, said that he had wiped his slate clean of the complaint also. Because they called us first, had us go do the inspection, didn't like the way I did the inspection, so called the fire marshal the same complaint, even though situation already been taken care of.
All right. And it turns out that there were a lot of other issues related to the, well, what I think led to the complaint.
There was a lot of issues related to the tenant.
Correct.
Not the complaint or the landlord's.
Correct.
Um, but, yeah, there were a lot of issues.
Good job.
Strangest, strangest one I've ever done.
Good job working on that, Dan. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Thank you, Dan.
Anything else for health officer? That was the only one, huh?
That's enough.
That's enough.
That's enough, yeah.
Okay, uh, maintenance.
Clear water filtration came this week and they worked on the water. Um, we are, after they worked on it, we are noticing a smell again, but it might just work itself out.
Hopefully work, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think...
Like sulfur smell or something?
Yeah, it's just...
I would, the end of next week has, if it's still there, give them a call probably.
Yeah.
They might have not turned a valve pack on or something.
Right. We tried running it to see, you know, sometimes that helps, but...
Yeah.
Was it the same? Yeah, the toilets were black.
Was it the same person that has been showing up?
I mean, he's been here before, but they rotate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll just wait it out, but just want to let you know they came and...
Uh, anything else for maintenance?
I think I saw, I think it's, it's, uh, something, uh, about years. I didn't have a call.
Okay, good.
Did they call that here or...
Oops.
We just got the system. We just got one right now.
I think we got it.
Yeah. Usually goes together.
Yeah, usually the town halls are doing all the lots of stuff, yeah.
Usually call before chicken pie.
Was it B and B? Was it B and B?
But we don't eat chicken now, sort of. And the reason we had it before chicken pies supper was because it was...
Because of the sufficient system. There you go. There you go. It's even money. Uh, IT, anything? Do we ever follow up on the printer thing?
Well, no, I just got back and saw that, which one you chose. And then, um, Gary says they're both in stock, so I'll order.
Yeah, I would say order one. Yeah. I mean, I don't, looking at the price difference, I mean, one didn't really make, didn't do much more.
He, he just said that the toner was a lot less. So, you know, we're constantly buying ink or tone or whatever you want to call it.
Oh, yeah. I would say if it's a little bit more, but the toner's less. I mean, the toner is expensive, so...
That's what you're buying, yeah.
So, um, I'm having trouble. I can't print anything on letterhead or anything with any, um, picture or whatever you want to call any logo. My printer just won't do it.
Yeah, so I would say let's get, let's get it. We've got money in the budget, let's do it. Let's get it. That way, when it dies, dies, it's not a, you know, we're not...
Trying to use all the ink up and then feel better about buying it.
Yep.
We used a lot this week. Yeah, we did, so...
Print those budgets.
Yeah.
That'll go.
Right. Tax bills.
Tax bills, yeah.
Yeah, so...
All right, cool. Uh, anything else for, well, not zoning, the planning commission? Any other than the end of month meeting?
No, it's, uh, we're gonna be working on the flood plane, the new flood plane. Like, it's gonna be done by 2025. That's the next thing.
Okay. All right. Open the public another business. So I'll, I'll kick it off just by saying, I think with, uh, all of the events that kind of culminated this on Saturday, kind of pulled together, was really great. I think that, you know, that, it seems like there's a couple of times a year where events align in the Towne Grattan that, you know, are awesome, so...
And it's really great weather on Saturday, too.
Yeah. I know, but the Historic Society and Sarah did a great job. Helped them with the Historic Society, too. Did, was, was really fun to, to open up the Peter Paul House and, you know, learn about properties in Grattan. And that was kind of neat. And then, you know, the barbecue went well, it seems like, so...
And the garden.
And the garden, yeah, and the garden as well. Yep. That was, that was, it was good. So I'd like to see more of that. That'd be great.
Think they would have been happier passing out some more vegetables, wouldn't they have?
Yeah, but they, they were there.
Well, at the end of the day, they resorted to walking down the street and many open car they threw as...
That's, that's a rescue run this time of year.
Yeah, that's right. Only in for fun, yeah.
I have one thing, too, that I think you guys saw. The Woodsville ambulance asking for one of you guys to go down to their meeting on the 14th.
Did you see that?
Which now we just moved our meeting to.
Can't make it. Can't have a meeting.
So that was easy.
Well, I know.
What was it in reference to?
I can go.
Except that I think they are hinting that it's gonna be a lot more money next year.
I do believe so.
I'll go.
Um...
But anyway, that's...
Well, I mean, I think we also talked about, about making sure that we got, in the next year's for budget purposes, right? So...
I think Woodsville ambulance is in the same spot as a lot of employers right now, where wages aren't where they tend to continue to be competitive. They've got to bring their wages up, so...
So, yeah, I mean...
And it is, this, they're meeting quarterly, so that's the first one. So maybe...
Second one.
The next one, when he is can hit.
Okay.
Or ask the fire chief to go and maybe he can report back.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Also, um...
Or maybe Brenda, Wade or Brenda, maybe.
Yeah, ambulance.
Brenda works for Woodsville ambulance, so probably would be the best.
Yeah. True.
Yeah.
I'll try to send an email to Wade Senior to see if, as available.
It would be.
I also wanted to say that we got our new banners.
Yeah, I saw that. That's awesome.
Oh, good.
So just trying to connect with Ben and Frank to put them up, so...
Getting them up just to have a follow-up each day. It's good.
Good.
Yeah, they're really pretty, so I think it would work.
For the price we paid for them.
Yeah.
Excellent. Until we get new ones again.
But it's the third, third time, it's the third ones?
Fourth.
Fourth, fourth already?
Well, they've, we've only bought them once.
We only bought them once.
We only bought them once.
Replace them for free three times. Hey, whatever. Uh, anything else for opening the public another business?
Question?
Yes, sir.
And according to the dog, I'm wondering how I'm getting this for registering my dog.
Okay. Can I get your name first so we know who you are?
More interesting. There was a couple houses from the van here.
Okay. All right. Mark, can you explain that?
Or his question? He's new to this. Behind his head.
The dog?
I want to start at the beginning, you know, with the registration so it can set I want to start at the beginning, you know, with the registration, so it can set some kind of pace, because I register my dog vaccinated on weekly. My dog gets attacked weekly by dogs around. I'm called to town for several times, just for their fight. And my, you know, nothing to him, he hasn't fooled us. The dog's having to wait for you to come get it. I have a bull mastiff coming through today. My dog's 75 pounds. That bull mastiff is probably half your weight. I assure you, that's what happens when you push dogs apart. Now 16 stitches. And you remind the dog, that's hopeless for me. The problem what happened is the new dogs that normally come to my house are two hours a day.
Okay.
When they come, generally they're pretty good. My dog now is getting ugly because they come and teeter at the end of the run. They'll go out and back off, knowing you can't get it. That doesn't bother me. My dog, Dan Banana, is normally friendly, but she's changing her mood. When these dogs come, the elders don't come get it, they send these little kids to get the dog. And I assure you, you know, 16 stitches and a kid weighs 35 pounds is gonna get hurt. And you people having a dog on this, what's the difference in registering my dog and not registering? You're not enforcing any different, are you?
So you, you bring about, bring a bell, boy, and that's part of the reason why we appointed Mark as our constable, um, to help-
I follow the old one. I've been to Dan, I hate to bug you. We're not doing, you're not enforcing. People ain't got taken serious. Why should I register my dog if the people that are registering their dog are getting the fangs back? There's no difference.
Uh, I, again, I understand what you're saying, and that's-
So we understand that, but if we can move to the next part, what are we gonna do about it?
Oh, I, I think that's part of the reason why we reviewed, I think last year we reviewed, or actually maybe it was earlier this year that we reviewed our policy, because we-
You went one last year and didn't do it.
No, and, and, well, I, I think that's, so the, the first part is we've updated the policy in the last year. I think, two, with appointing Mark, I think, and Mark, you know, you were at the last meeting with us, too, when we talked about some of this stuff, one of the primary functions that Mark as our constable is gonna do is start to look at investigating where we know the dogs have been registered previously and haven't registered, as well as help to follow through with what our policy says as far as following up all those complaints.
The town, no one registered it or not. If you got the dog, all the dogs in the town, they knew it last year.
But the problem is, some of these dogs have never been registered.
Right, one of these dogs I have trouble with was in another town right border of this one, and they took them 30 days to get that dog out of that town.
We don't even have somebody to get the dogs.
Yeah, we had a, we had a organ.
We have ordinances, but we don't have people that can take the dogs, there's so many dogs to take.
But you're still getting, you're not answering your question. What are we gonna do? You have your ordinance, piece of paper, you don't enforce it.
Well, I'd, I'd ask you, what, what do you think needs to be done?
I think they should enforce your rule. First, why register a dog if you're not gonna get punished for not registering?
Yeah, you do get punished.
Are you getting punished? You can send me a letter all day, I can come to the lab, throw it away every day. That ain't, that's no punishment. And if, if you did last year, so you get to next year, you didn't do anything about it a year before, run a second year, going into a third year, no enforcement, mustn't get you, fuck you, you're, you're good, you're, you're fine.
He's got a good point, he's new. He's got a good point. Well, what's the answer? Well, what do you want, Mark? What do you want us to do?
He wants us to enforce the law.
Well, what's, what, no, I, I get what you're saying, but what part of the policy do you want us to enforce? I, I, I'm not-
You know, the dogs, they do it all the time. We have a new one running around now. Can somebody, Mark, you, I don't care who, both the people that, they just say, boy, keep getting out. I couldn't thank you. Mine's broke about six weeks, but it's down the road anyway. I get it on a 200-pound cat's tail. I don't want my dog to get hurt, I don't want him hurt any way else. Why can't somebody like you?
Well, I think, so, what I will say is, and one of the reasons why we updated the policy to, to the way it is now, is, you know, I, as a member of the select board, can't go out and enforce that policy. And I, what I will say is, and I don't want to say that that means that we're not enforcing the policy, that's why, you know, we're, with, with Mark as our new constable, we get these complaints fly out, you know, we also need to maintain due process. So I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that, we, we have to maintain, so if, if we have a complaint and Mark investigates it and finds somebody or has the dog impounded or otherwise, and that person doesn't think that, that that's fair or just or otherwise, we have to adjudicate that as a select board, okay? So that's part of the process. So the, the biggest thing is, I think, and what I would say to anybody if you have an issue, and, you know, I would encourage Mark to talk to you and, and let's investigate this and start here, is, let's go find those people, let's give them the letter, let's start the process as we laid it out in the policy. And if we feel, and, and if the policy doesn't seem like it's right, or the ordinance needs to be updated, let's, let's look at it again, and if we need to make it more strict or more, you know, strongly worded, or we need to increase fines, or whatever we need to do, you know, let, let's look at what that means, but, you know, I get what you're saying.
You're here, you're, you're already protected here, and you've done nothing.
We are short-staffed, just like everybody else for everything.
It has to be everywhere, but that doesn't solve your problem.
So how do you want us to solve the problem?
I understand the frustration when someone's out here, I know, but the problem is, you're not gonna gain the confidence of people in registering the dog. I won't register my dog. I'll call me your boss. Come get me. You're not coming to get my next door neighbors. That bull mastiff, I guarantee you, he gets a hold of somebody, you people got problems.
So I'll, I'll work on this, I'll work on this.
This is, this is your person.
No, listen, I'm gonna, I'll work on this, I'll work, talk with Dan, I'll-
This is the same bull mastiff that I came to you about the last meeting, that has been in my yard, after my animals, and I told you that-
Okay.
He's had his letters, he's had everything else, and he will not keep that dog home. That dog lives a mile from us.
Okay, well, I'll get involved in it and I'll, I'll see what we can do.
I'm gonna get involved in it like I told you.
Which you said you would.
I haven't had the opportunity yet, but when I do, I will correct the problem.
So I guess, I guess I would say, if we know where the home is, is that, first off, is that in town or drop?
Yes, it is. At the end of the night, sir.
And I would say if we've done-
The owner of the dog has been to my house twice to take and try to find his dog, and he's been pulled straight through his face. The dog comes to my backyard again, you won't have to look for it. I have not been up, he's had every opportunity to keep that dog home. That dog's never been registered in this town. Plus, he's got another dog this time.
So I would, I would, again, go back to what is, and I don't think we'll work on- I will say it's, it, Mark, let's, if it's, if we've done the due process to this point, we've sent the letters, we've done the fines-
Which I believe we have.
Well, then we need to talk to whoever it is that does the, what's her name, that does the impounds, and-
Joker.
You have to, does it do that?
No, what I'm saying is, then we need to go out and impound the dog. Like, if that's the next step in our process, then we should, we should act now.
Can you, you know, have you let it, let it go, say, do your paper, give your three verbal, you know, verbal warning, can you go there and get the dog?
Yes.
To help, to one next door to you, unvaccinated.
No, and that, and that's the way our ordinance is laid out, so if we do follow those steps, right, we do the letters, we do the fines, and we, and, and that hasn't been addressed, then the next step is to have the dog impounded.
I don't know that I can go to somebody's house.
Not you. No, not you. Not you. No, not you. Yeah, let, we'll have to get to the-
We'll call our game, our dog person.
The dog needs to be caught off the property. You can't legally go in to somebody's yard and take their dog unless it's adjudicated.
Well, by the ordinance, if it's, if the dog isn't registered, then yes, we can impound the dog for not being- But you can contain the dog as a landowner, and you call, they'll come get it.
The, the two dogs he's talking about next door, I think they can be caught because they'll come to food. The bull mastiff will come up to you and act all friendly until he gets about from me to Harold, and then he starts getting vicious.
All right, well, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and talk about the, the dogs all night, but I, we'll work on it, we'll do something. How's that? I'll work on it.
That's the thing, though, we need to kind of get, you know, like you said, you've got two years, you look at the books, you know, you're going into your third year.
Okay, I, listen, I said I'd work on this.
You'll work on it more.
So, 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 Morrison, I'll, I'll tell you, I, I can't speak to the last couple of years, what, what our constable did or didn't do, okay? But just the point of the new constable, at the last select board meeting, we talked about that, and he, he already has the list, I think you already have the list, or Kerry has the list, so we can start looking at dogs that haven't been registered that have been registered in the past. When it comes to dogs that have never been registered before, you know, let's get through the list of things that we know, and we'll start working on the things that we don't know, and if there's a complaint, we gotta follow the process, and we gotta, if, if we've gotta impound dogs, we've gotta impound dogs. That's the way the policy's laid out. And I think that's the only way we can start taking action. I can't fix two years ago, right? I can't now.
But I can fix it.
No, I know, but we can fix now, and I think that's the thing. So we, we've got a new constable who's got his teeth on dog ordinance stuff right now, and I think that's the starting point.
As long as we're doing something, you know, like you said, the letters are doing, you know, I'm afraid you're gonna have to send somebody there so you can under, they can understand. And we're not even talking about how they try. You know, you take your life into your own hands, going out and checking your mail.
Yeah, well, and, and again, I think part of that was Mark, Mark, like you said, you're hand-delivering those letters to make sure that we're connecting directly to, uh, bringing people, having a conversation with them about-
That's good. And you need that, that's what they need. You, you're not gonna get their attention, you know, the police are there like weekly, so they don't pay attention to, you know, the piece of paper, to get served on something that's conscious.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, I can't, we can't control everybody all the time, you know.
You know, you need, somehow get some stability.
Well, and that's, that's why we appointed a new constable to help us with that.
And what is it, you know?
Who doesn't have to worry about sitting down here and- Which we're also trying to run a town, too, not worry about everybody's dogs and everybody's yards, too. This is, I mean, we, we actually are, we have other stuff we're working on. So, we will work on this, but give us, we'll take this-
Meanwhile, we need to deal with it, you know, I, my dog is registered inside, and they get attacked, hooked in its own yard.
I understand.
So, for me, I'm patient. You tell me you've got something going, we're gonna go. That dog, even again, bites on my dog, I'll finish it.
Fine.
Not a threat, I'm protecting my property.
Fine.
And if that happens, the dog takes back me.
Then we won't have to have this discussion, it'll be done, taken care of. So, good. Again, I mean, I think that's why-
Here we are, we're all good.
And I would say, you know, let's let Mark do his job, and we'll see where that goes, and from there, we'll have to take it to the next step, and I, and I mean, figure out-
That's all, that's all, Mr. Paul Rowan and Warren, we'll deal with that.
Morrison, thanks. Number one, thank you for registering your dogs, even though you don't have to, the town's not gonna force you into it. You're doing the right thing, that's why you do it.
And I think-
Number two-
Leave, leave, back to people that, and they, they can go move.
Yep, and number two, thank you for coming to the board and bringing this to our attention. This is something that you stood on for it seems like a year and a half, two years, and you could have sat at home and stood on it some more, but you chose to show up here tonight and bring it to the board's attention, and hopefully, because of that, some resolution comes out of this. So I want to thank you for coming out here and, and sticking up not only for your household, but all the other ones on the road, too.
It's not, you know, I can finish myself, well, can I buy your can? I assure you, one minute will get it, twenty minutes, two dogs, that's gonna have a curious story.
No, we, we don't get involved in that, we're not, with the-
I don't, I'm proud of the kids, and I carry them up and the dogs.
I, I, I do understand that that could create a liability, for sure. Thank you.
So, I believe that last week you talked about me, like, if I find, I'm gonna find the dog running loose, that I can catch it up, and either-
Take it home.
If it's registered as a tag, come to the town clerk's office, figure out whose it is, and bring it back there, or if we have found them, and they haven't found them, or they haven't paid for the bond, that I can bring it up to the ordinance, to the town.
Right, or just leave it at the town clerk's office and the-
Put a little hook out there.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is, is if, and that, I would make sure you get, is it, what's her name, Kim?
Michelle Boyce.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Michelle, yeah.